This meeting of the Gaston City Council now come to order and the Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams, I know he's in the building. Avery?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We do have a quorum present and the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Harris to lead the invocation. Please stand or remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessing that you have bestowed upon us. We ask that you will be in our midst as we prepare to conduct the business of the city. We ask for guidance for all of our leaders, local, city, state, national, and international. We ask that you be with our troops as they are in harm's way throughout the world. And we will continue to give you all the blessings. These blessings we ask in Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Let me read you to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Waigo.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in the council meeting on September the 27th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of September the 23rd through the 29th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Since the mayor's not here, I don't guess there's any proclamation. There's unfinished business, we have none.
He has one, but he's not gotten down yet.
He was tied upstairs in the corner.
Okay, well, he can do it when he comes.
We got him on the elevator.
We got so much to do today. Now it is a resolution authorizing grant agreement with Alabama Department of Transportation. This is for two vans to be used for senior citizens and meals program. The amount is forty-six thousand five twenty-one fifty per vehicle, with a 20 percent match required. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Like I said upstairs, I still got a van we could swap with him. Ben, you willing to get that van up?
Being a senior, I'm for these two vans.
What about the one you already got?
The bomb squad's using it.
Oh, okay.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Well, I'll let the mayor go now.
I told him we had to corner it in the elevator.
Superintendent of the Gaston City Board Education, come up please. I got a proclamation here for you, Dr. Miller. We may have to put Dr. Miller on the council. I see him about as much as I do you guys. Says whereas the National Safe Routes to School Partnership, the Alabama Department of Transportation and over seventy-five organizations and agencies across the state affiliated with the network are working together to promote Walk to School Day in Alabama. The health and safety of our children is of highest concern to the citizens of Gaston. A lack of physical activity plays a leading role in rising rates of obesity, diabetes, and other health problems among children, and being able to walk or bicycle to school offers an opportunity to build activity into a daily routine. Driving students to school by private vehicle contributes to traffic congestion and air pollution, creating over 25 percent of community traffic at the beginning and end of each day. An important role for parents and caregivers is to teach children about pedestrian safety and become aware of the difficulties and dangers that children face on their trip to school each day, and the health and environmental risks related to physical inactivity and air pollution. Community members and leaders should make a plan to make immediate changes to enable Alabama's children to safely walk and bicycle in our communities, and develop a list of suggestions for improvements that can be done over time. Children, parents, and community leaders around the world are joining together to walk to school and evaluate walking and bicycling conditions in their communities. Walk and Bicycle to School Month in October and Walk and Bicycle to School Week is the first week in October have proven to be helpful in encouraging children to safely walk and bicycle to school, and in creating and promoting local safe route to school programs across the United States and throughout the world. Therefore, be it resolved that our Sherman Gaitan Mayor of the City of Gaston proclaimed the month of October 2011 as Walk and Bicycle to School Month, and proclaim October 5th, 2011, International Walk to School Day in Gaston, and our job, students, parents, teachers, administrators, schools, and school districts in the Gaston area to participate in these events and encourage everyone to consider the safety and health of their children this month and every month.
Let me thank the City Council and the mayor for their contribution in this program. As you may know or remember, we've received grants. Chad, I know, is working with us at your brown sixty thousand dollar grant. It'll be more markings, signage, and things like that to make the school more visible, the safety of the school. We have two grants that we just received this year at Striplin and at Donahue that we'll be incorporating, getting a lot more signage and reflecting safety and encouraging motorists and people around the school. You know, we believe our students and our parents, obviously, want to be safe, but we thank the police department for being more visible and encouraging their officers to be in our schools and our areas. Again, as the mayor said, tomorrow is Walk to School Day, and I know the TV coverage is going to be there, 2024, and some other newspaper agencies and reporting agencies will be at most of our schools because we will have a walk to school. So slow down, everybody, and encourage all of our civilians to slow down as they go to school, not just tomorrow, but we'll have a lot of kids walking, and we'd like to encourage that. We'd like to ensure that our neighborhoods are safe and our kids can do that, and they go back to those, because we hear all the talk about how we used to walk to school in the snow and so on and so forth. That's sort of a lost art. So we thank the mayor, we thank the City Council for assisting us and publicizing this day and this month. Thanks.
Thanks, Dr. Miller. I would say that we're not going to make them like most of you, except maybe Devery, make them walk to school barefooted with a surf bucket and lunch and all that, like all of y'all used to do.
I used to walk to school uphill both ways. Ten miles.
You know, I want to strike while the iron is hot, and more of an appeal to the engineering department than anything, but just be sure that these are all good things, and I think should be noted that we've petitioned on behalf of every school, I think, and I want to, you know, ask that we continue that process to be sure that those schools that were missed this round could potentially be considered the next round of funding.
What is he going to do? What actually are they going to do and who's in charge of deciding what they do?
That's a good question, Councilman Eccles, and if I understand it correctly, I think the school board's responsible for the actual grant proposal, but I think the engineering department can support relative to some study activity and that kind of thing. So, you know, I ask that we will continue to do that to ensure that all of the schools get consideration.
Public works is probably going to be able to have its own issues too.
Might.
And this is a state grant, a grant that comes from Alabama. We've submitted for all of our schools, and they just grant a few throughout the state. So we'll continue that process. We've granted three of those.
Okay. Are you going to have something where we can look at it and see what you're going to do at each one of these schools? Two of these are in my district, so the reason I'm really interested in it, two out of the three.
I'm glad Dever brought that up because Mitchell School, now, they had a meeting the other day, so we're moving forward with that with Jones Blair, and I think that's going to come to fruition. I'm looking forward to that. We really need the help.
New businesses, any new business?
Mr. President, I have a resolution I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider this morning. It's pertaining to keeping bees within the city. It's an ordinance that amending City Code Section 1066 regarding beekeeping. And essentially what it says is, if you build, you can have a bee hive in your property inside the city if you put a six-foot fence around it, a blind fence, so the bees will fly up when they won't go directly around the human, they'll fly up when they leave. That's the, that's it.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I'll ask for passage, please.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Any questions?
I'd like to interject that I heard them say upstairs that local honey is where you get the allergy situation from. If you buy it from way out of county or state, it loses that, so you have to buy local honey to get that injected in. That and those dang gum killer bees, Bill, we're talking about those.
Yes, they say if you have the local honeybee, you have less likely of the killer bee moving into the area. Of course, we all know the importance of bees and their pollination, so I guess a move we should make.
Win-win.
Any other? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a resolution, number 201111, that I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today.
And it's?
And it is, it's authorizing agreement with PNT Entertainment for Mother May I, featuring Peanut, perform at the amphitheater October the 7th.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I understand this is a good group of, that plays 60s, 70s music, is that correct? Okay, so, so they're very good.
Any other?
Hey Kay, I see you have on here the starting time's going to be from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM?
It's 11:00.
Okay, that's what I thought it was, I just couldn't make sure, just for myself.
Atlanta'll be in there.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Yes, I have one. It's Resolution 364, accepting the Department of Justice grant an amount of twenty-seven thousand five hundred ninety-three dollars for digital wearable video audio equipment for the police department. Ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
And ask for adoption.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. President, I have a question, and I asked it upstairs again. I don't know if the chief now can give me an answer as to how many patrol officers we have out on the streets, or patrol total, total patrol.
Total, I think there's fifty-two.
Fifty-two?
Yes, sir.
And we're looking at thirty of these cameras, and I've pledged to find some money, give some money out of my discretion, and we need fifty-two of these cameras. I think everybody who's out there needs to have one of these on for our protection and their protection, and the citizens' protection, so I'd like to get some commitments from this council that we've equipped all of our officers with these special.
We get thirty, we need another twenty-two, right?
Based on what he's saying, yeah. I'm just saying, I know we need to do that, whatever the unit price is and...
So what we're talking about is like two thousand dollars a piece?
Right.
Nine thousand.
Two or three thousand?
Two times eight, sixteen.
That'd be four, about four thousand.
Four thousand, okay. Whatever it is, I want the nice.
Let's let him get a price and see what we can do. I think, yeah, I think what we should do is, once the chief has a price, and he's purchased as many as he can get with the price, then he come to us, and we amend the city's budget to include enough money to buy enough of these for all policemen.
I just think it's the right thing to do, so.
I agree with that.
Okay. All right.
Okay, chief.
I told you I was going to get it.
Is there any other new business?
We got to vote on it.
Win-voted?
We haven't voted.
Well, let's vote.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Department of Courts, Kay, you want to?
Thank you, Council. This Friday is First Friday, there was some confusion, and it goes to show people do read the Gaston Times, they just don't read at all. They see headlines and think, oh, September was the last First Friday, but Friday will be a great day to come out, to historic downtown Gaston. We've got all kinds of things going on. You've got more entertainment than we normally have, you've got robots, it is nice to bring in their robots to, in front of Imagination Place, to do a robot demonstration. We've got great food, we've got great sales, we've got, we have a lot of local authors that are, that will be, we actually have three book signings at First Friday this time, a CD signing, or a CD, I guess a CD signing with different people, and we just got a lot of good things happening, so we're really excited about the Gaston State Show Band is our big entertainment in front of BB and T this time. We've got all kinds, Matt Harvey Band, Alliance, this is a group of people who work for NASA. They're coming from Huntsville to play in front of the Center for Cultural Arts, so they're going to be great. Retro, we just got all kinds of good things going on this time, so, I mean, Harbison, what's his, Damascus Road, they're going to be there, and I think that's about all the music. Lots of good entertainment and just some good things going on. From 6:00 to 9:00, First Friday will take place on Broad Street from 6:00 to 9:00. Oh, the tractors, don't let me forget the tractors. The Alice Chalmers and G Tractors are going to be there, they're, it's kind of their kickoff to the big event for them the next weekend. So they'll be there, you can come down and see all of those and just have a good time. And then after First Friday, as we talked, and thank you, Councilman Kay, for pointing that out, from 9:00 to 11:00, Peanut and Mother May I. Now Peanut's real name is Desiree Fitz. This is a group in Birmingham, and Peanut is about Yay Paul, which I think is how she got her name, but they're a great group out of Birmingham, they played in my high school reunion recently, so, just a lot of good music stuff that you'll recognize, that you can dance to, you can sing along with, and it's just going to be a great night. The wonderful thing about this, it's all free, you can just come and enjoy, enjoy your historic downtown, and then go on over to the amphitheater, which is a great place. We are beginning to utilize the amphitheater a lot more than we did, and I think that's a great place for us to use too, so, come on down, the weather is going to be perfect. I don't know, you know, there's no excuse not to be in downtown Gaston.
Kay, you said the Alice Chalmers tractor's going to be there?
The G tractor.
Is that the one that Bob made in eighteen something?
Yeah.
That's the first one? That's the first one's going to be there? Okay. I know he's been bragging about it.
I was there.
He was bragging about it.
I worked at Alice Chalmers at the time, and it was in eighteen, no, it wasn't quite eighteen.
But he actually did work there when they first tracked it. I thought it was eighteen hundred, but maybe it was nineteen, but I know he was there with the first tractor.
I worked there, I can verify, saw him build it.
The first tractor, okay.
And then the first cotton picker too.
Yeah.
Next is Fay Edwards, wants to speak to us about the sickle cell walkathon.
Good morning.
To Mayor Gaitan, councilmen, and all who are living in here. It is with pleasure and enthusiasm that we stand before you today. Mrs. Tillmans, Mr. Zachary, and I have been on this journey of planning this walk since December 2010. We have anxiously awaited the arrival of October 8th for the sickle cell walkathon 2011. Now this is the very first time that the walk has been hosted in Gaston, the city of champions, and the very first time that the three of us have co-chaired an event of this nature, and we must say, it's been real. Now sickle cell disease is a genetic disorder characterized by abnormally shaped sickle or crescent shaped red blood cells. Normal red blood cells are round and pass easily through the blood vessels. In sickle cell disease, because the blood cells are crescent shaped, it's difficult for the blood cells to pass through the vessels, leading to severe pain, blood clots, strokes, anemia, organ damage, and other complications. This disease affects African Americans to a great extent, as one out of every five hundred African Americans are born with sickle cell disease, and one out of every ten has the sickle cell trait. The disease also affects those of Mediterranean, Greek, or Sicilian descent. Mrs. Tillmans and I have been nurses, have both been nurses, for more than forty years. We have witnessed firsthand how debilitating and excruciating and even deadly this disease can be, although there's no cure at this time for sickle cell. Due to advances in medicines and research, sickle cell patients are living longer with productive lives. Our goal for this fundraiser is just twenty-five thousand dollars.
That's not much.
So we are quite optimistic that we will reach our goal. With your continued help and support, we are most confident that we will be successful. So thank you, Mayor Gaitan and Councilmen, as well as Mrs. Sharon Lewis, who is the executive director of the Sickle Cell Foundation in Birmingham, and her staff for providing guidance and assistance along our journey. So we say, put your walking shoes on and join us this Saturday, October 8th, at Verona Park. Registration starts at 8:30. The walk takes off at 9:30. The registration fee for adults is twenty-five dollars, and for students is fifteen dollars. Both fees include an official sickle cell tee-shirt. So I say to you today, avoid the rush and pre-register today. I have forms with me. Now I hear some of you saying, I can't walk, but that's okay. We will accept your donations of money or blood. Yes, blood. The American Red Cross will have a blood mobile available to accept blood donations. The Red Cross, you know, is always in need of donated blood, and sickle cell patients often require blood transfusions because of their anemia. So if you want to have a fun time raising funds for a worthy cause, come join us this Saturday, October 8th, at Verona Park, and after the walk, enjoy music, pre-hot dogs, water, drinks, fruit. Now y'all come in here.
Next is Alfred Williams.
I'm Alfred Williams, of Washington, who has faced on what happened over the last several weeks, so, the first thing I want to do is to turn on the mic.
All right, thank you. You didn't turn on the whole one. All right. First thing I wanted to do is to thank, you know, God for my being here. Were it not for the grace of God, I would not be here, and I'm not going to even try to tell you what has happened, because you won't believe it. So I thank God and Jesus Christ for my being here. I'm here to talk about agency appropriations. Looking at this agency appropriation handout that I was given by the city clerk, I come across some shocking things. Let me take my glasses off. It says, "The city annual budget includes appropriations to city and state agencies and to civic organizations who provide the citizens of Gaston services and function of a public purpose." I was shocked when I analyzed this to see who were included in the thirteen groups that were funded. First of all, and secondly, I need to issue a disclaimer. I do not know Superintendent Miller personally, I only know about, know Ms. Moore over downtown Gaston, not personally. I think I know Gary Lewis with the Edgewall County Community Action. I know this, and this agency is not even listed on there, 13th place, Ms. Kim Payne. I know her, at least I heard of her, I never met her, I don't think, and I know Ms. Betty Knowles over at the Carver Museum. What I found shocking was, out of thirteen agencies that were funded by the City of Gaston, well, it wasn't but twelve funded. Well, I take that back. Eleven, eleven out of the thirteen in the 212 budget were funded compared to 2011. In the 2012 budget, the CED Mental Health Center was not funded, the Edgewall County Community Services Program were not funded, and those agencies provide vital services to the residents of Gaston. Community service help peoples to weatherize their home and to do, you know, other, you know, functions. Edgewall, I mean, the CED Mental Health helps, you know, patients who have a history of, you know, mental issues. So I can't understand why those two agencies, CED Mental Health went from ten thousand funded in the 2011 budget to zero in 2012. Edgewall County Community Services Program, Mr. Gary Lewis, went from twelve thousand to zero. And the one that I was primarily concerned about was the funding to, I mean, the Gaston City Board of Education. Dr. Miller works with, you know, our children, I'm a product of the Gaston Community, I mean, Gaston Education System. I went to Carver for two years at Emma Sansom. The mayor know that I played football at Emma Sansom, he alluded to that in one of his presentations. So thirteen agencies presented here. Out of those, only one is headed by a black person, and that black person's funding was eliminated. So one out of thirteen, that means that seven point percent, seven point six percent of the agencies in Gaston that the City of Gaston fund, only seven point six percent of them are headed by minorities. I suggest that the city also fund the Carver Museum, and also 13th place, which provides residents for our honorary youth and youth of other problem. Those two, 13th place, with Ms. Kim Payne not even listed, Carver Museum, Ms. Betty Knowles not even listed, and it could go on. The only agency that received an increase in their 212 budget was cultural arts utility. Only one that stayed at level funding was the Edgewall County Strings Program. They stayed at a hundred thousand dollars. And it goes on and on, that's why I was shocked. Across the board, you had about a 10% cut in funding to groups, but like I say, only two didn't get to act, and that was a cultural, I mean, Gaston cultural... And that was the Cultural, I mean, Gaston Cultural, Cultural Commission, I think that was Mr. Slade, if I'm not mistaken. So, I'm suggesting that the City of Gaston include thirteenth place in your funding, Carver Museum in your funding, and you got well enough money to do it. You got about eight million dollars, eight point nine million dollars sitting up in, you know, some bank somewhere. And you have the money to do it. I heard one councilman say that you, city should have one month operating expenses in reserve. The city gotta buy two. All right, well, it's changed since I last heard it.
He just got fined a hundred dollars, but go ahead.
All right. You know, I ain't gonna, I'm gonna try to stay with the budget, all right? So, if you came back and gave thirteenth place twenty thousand dollars, and the Carver Museum with Miss Betty Knowles twenty thousand dollars, put funding back in the budget for the CED Mental Health Center at ten thousand dollars, put funding back in the budget for the Edgewall County Community Services Program at twelve thousand dollars, you would have approximately one million six hundred and fifty-two dollars, I mean, fifty-two thousand dollars for two-twelve, I mean, two-eleven, and then one thousand four hundred and eighty-four five hundred dollars for the two-twelve budget. Thank you.
Okay, remarks by the mayor and the council. Who wants to start? Mayor, you wanna start?
I will. I can comment on a couple of, Mr. Williams. One of them, community services, we bought a building for them last year for a hundred and fifty-seven or a hundred and seventy-five, I don't remember the exact figure, but it was well over a hundred thousand dollars, closer to two hundred thousand. We bought their building and gave it to them, okay? On mental health, they moved to a tala. We were funding them because they were here, and we did get money off, I think they have about eighty-something employees, I'm not sure. But anyway, they moved to a tala, and so we're letting the tala fund them. On the school board, we also, I don't know the exact figures, but we've, Dr. Miller, I guess you might know, last year, I think, last couple of years, haven't we been about three or four million total, our payment and all the different things we've done? We helped them quite a bit, quite a bit. And we're glad to. We just did about forty thousand dollars worth of iPads for the Thompson Elementary School, fifth and, fourth and fifth graders or fifth and sixth, fourth and fifth. And we plan to try to take that system wide maybe as soon as next year, and we're the ones that helped them with that. On thirteenth, excuse me, on thirteenth place, I think we funded them a large sum last year just out, how much, Bill?
I think five thousand dollars.
Five thousand, we gave them some money last year just out of the budget, not when the funding was gone. I guess we gave them, funding during the budget, but then we gave them an additional five thousand.
Undesignated out of a community development, I believe it was.
A community development, David tells me, okay. And Carver, we have some money set aside for a project we're doing over there, and it might not have been in this right here, but we are sort of trying to put some money in there as we go along for some project, we're hoping to get started before too long. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to thank Ms. Edwards for such a good presentation. She was, I mean, it was beautiful. Thank you, thank you. And the purpose, the function that she's speaking of is one of very grave and points to us here in the City of Gaston. And I would just like to also encourage everyone to come on out Saturday and participate in this event, and let's make it a big success. Let us show, let us show the state of Alabama and northeast Alabama what the City of Gaston can really do. When we put our minds to it, you know, we can do pretty much anything that we want to do. So, come on out and support the Sickle Cell Walkathon on Saturday night. If you have any questions or issues, Ms. Edwards will be here for just a minute after the council meeting, and she'll be glad to give you any information and take your applications also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, again, I do wanna echo that. I think the Sickle Cell Walkathon is a great event. I'll be traveling this weekend, so I won't have an opportunity to participate, but with that said, yeah, we were kind of whispering amongst ourselves to figure out how we were gonna make that happen.
I got his money, he can go.
So, but we're gonna, we're gonna take care of it. Now, you can't cash these checks personally. There you go, that's, that's good information, thank you for that. So, the Sickle Cell Foundation, so we'll get you taken care of, that's for sure. That's definitely a good, good event to support. District Two meeting this past week went really well, good participation, and I always appreciate the folks in District Two and how they step up and challenge me to continue to be a good public servant and an attentive public servant, so I do appreciate that meeting. One of the things that, and I apologize to the mayor, this is the first he's gonna hear this, but one of the things that they did speak to is that there's quite a bit of activity, you know, that's very noticeable generally in the East Gaston area along Meagan Boulevard, with it being one of the main thoroughfares through the city, or the main thoroughfare, to be quite honest. It's very visible and very noticeable when there's activity there. But North Gaston sometimes gets forgotten in that regard because it's so remote in terms of its location. So, one of the things that they cried out for, both folks from East Gaston and North Gaston, is that we be attentive to the North Gaston Gateway, and to be sure that from a commercial development standpoint, that we give some attention to the North Gaston area. And I do think that that was a reasonable request on their part. So, again, I do wanna make sure that we keep that on the radar and ensure that from a police coverage standpoint and from a commercial development standpoint, where the city has the capacity to drive it, that we make sure we keep the North Gaston area on the radar. I think that's it.
Fay, we were discussing, Derek and I both was, and of course, I won't be here this weekend either, but the check's in the mail. But we're gonna challenge all of our council members to contribute to this effort. And hopefully, I think we will, as a matter of fact, we're gonna get with Jenny when this meeting is over, to be sure that we can get all the council members to contribute. I lost a relative and a good friend to Sickle Cell, so I know how devastating it can be on a family, how it can take its toll on a family, so I too support that one hundred We still working on several things, budget wise, I know it's two hundred dollars. We're still working on several things for the budget, and some things that deal with employees. So, hopefully, in the next few weeks, we're gonna get all of that taken care of, because we do have another important issue we need to get on the table. And I'll wait before I bring that issue up, but we wanna get the budget and the employee benefits and everything else out of the way over the next few weeks, so we can move forward with the city's business. So, again, you through, Mr. President?
Yeah, I'm through.
Okay, I just wanna be sure.
That was my daughter.
I understand. Sometime you gotta answer the phone, I don't have no problem with that.
It had been cut off, and I didn't make the announcement, so I didn't do it.
There you go.
We were late getting here.
Okay, so you didn't cut yours off, that's right. All right, that'll work. But anyway, again, hopefully, like I said, we can get all that taken care of. And I know the city employees and retirees and everybody is anxious for us to go ahead and do some things, so they'll know where they stand. So, hopefully, Mr. Attorney and the mayor's office have done all the research that we've asked them to do on a couple of issues, and we'll be able to move forward on that real soon. Yes.
I read in the Gaston Times this morning with a lot of horror and sadness, the situation that happened up in Nakalua Falls, where the dogs got into the deer pen and killed so many of our deer up there. It's a terrible, terrible thing to happen. Somebody who's in charge of security dropped the ball, I don't know who, but I'm really disappointed in what's happened up there. Wanna encourage everybody that lives in that area, somebody knows who those dogs belong to, and they're responsible for what happened up there. When you let your dogs out or where they get out on their own, you're responsible. And I've been assured by the police department that they will find the owner of those dogs, and they will be responsible for the damages done up there. So, it's sad to see that happen, and somebody, our security system didn't function like it's supposed to be. So, I'm sad about that. Anyway, I've been asked by the Love Center to announce that their building behind the old Sears Building is gonna be closed. If it's not already closed, they're gonna close that office building there and move it down to South Thewes Street. It's nine fifteen South Thewes Street, where they have the home down there already. So, they'll move the office down there, and they asked me to announce that. Tonight, I'll be having a district meeting at the Arthur Green Room, six o'clock. We'll be talking primarily with the issues around Gaston Middle School, those neighbors there were encouraged to have that meeting, so we'll be talking with that. But everybody in the district is certainly welcome, I hope you come out and let's have a good meeting. It's Arthur Green Room, six o'clock tonight. Thank you.
I'd like to remind everyone, the fifteenth, Saturday the fifteenth, at Alabama City gazebo, from six to ten o'clock, we'll have music on Meagan, it'll be free hot dogs, free bottled water, there's four or five groups will be there singing, remind everybody about that. Also, too, on the twenty-seventh of October, we'll have our trick or treat on Wall Street, be from five to seven thirty, expecting about anywhere from fifteen hundred to three thousand kids that night, wish everybody would come out that night also. And I guess I, I'm gonna say what I'm gonna say. On my phone the other day, I got an invitation to the civil service meeting tomorrow, which will be Wednesday, from four thirty to five thirty, and I guess I'll be okay by saying anybody that wants to come, it'll be out here in council chambers from four thirty to five thirty. If you just wanna come and hear what's going on, just feel welcome to, because, you know, it was on my phone, I got the invitation, so I guess I'm inviting everybody else that wants to come.
It's a public meeting.
True, it's a public meeting, so if anybody wants to come, just feel free to come. Also, too, I would like to say, I think every council member and the mayor up here supports education. We do everything possible for education we can for our kids. We talked to Dr. Miller today, and he promised us by next summer, all those kids in those classes, those fourth and fifth grade classes or fourth grade classes, we'll have those iPads, and that's really gonna help all the schools. We really appreciate him stepping up to the plate, trying to help us with that. Also, too, the eleventh of October at six o'clock at Banks Park, we'll be having a District Six meeting, it's at Banks Park Activity Center, October eleventh at six o'clock.
Yeah. Well, I wanna commend Vicki at the Humane Society. Mayor, we found the owner of the dog. Turned out not to be what I said it was, it was something else, and the age was wrong, I had all that wrong, and she took over and found the owners and so on and so forth, and that turned out real good. But I do wanna commend Vicki, because she did a real good job down there, she really did. Once again, our leash law comes into focus, I'm gonna agree with you, Bill. People turn their dogs loose at four thirty in the afternoon, knowing that our animal control quits at what, four? And they go home, because we don't have the money to fund it completely twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, I don't think. But I'm gonna tell you, Bill, our security up there has got to suffer, and I totally agree with you on that, that there's just something wrong when three dogs can get in and kill twenty-two or twenty-four of our deer, had to be a noise. And if they're patrolling back and forth, I would think that they'd hear a commotion going on, surely.
Not at the sleep.
I would think so. Do what?
Not at the sleep. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, at their sleep, we oughta wake them up, but I think more so, we oughta look into the reasons that maybe they're asleep, or what they're doing up there, and let's follow up on that and see what we can do about security in all our places where we're contracting security. I'm just asking for that, okay? I gotta say to Alfred, Alfred, every morning we drank coffee at Jack's, and I'm gonna say this to you, because I firmly believe it. In nineteen ninety-four, I had an opinion about everything in this city, and I voiced it everywhere I went. I think the mayor did an extremely good job this morning of telling you about the things that you thought should be funded and how they were compensated otherwise. To be informed is the main thing. You gotta be informed, because if you're not, you're gonna run out here and just say things that you have to back up on later, okay? In nineteen ninety-four, I would say, well, I'll go down there to the city, and by golly, I'll do this and I'll do that. Well, problem was, I ran and won. Then I got down here, got informed, and things kind of changed. So, my, I wanna tell you, and I'll tell you in the morning at coffee again, that many opinions, get informed, and then run for this office, and get up here and do something about it. I think that's where you are at the present time. But I enjoy having coffee with you every morning, anyway. That's all I have.
Okay, so, now, anything else, I'll entertain a motion, we adjourn.
If you don't have any more phone calls, we adjourn.